Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session. Today is Tuesday, November 26, 2019, and I’m calling this meeting to order at 6:03. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allott.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Mattson.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. Moving on to the invocation, Mr. Allott.
Thank you. I wanted to take a few minutes and remember a well-known figure in the greater Harrisburg community. As many are aware, Greg Mace, who was longtime sports director at the local ABC affiliate, passed away this past week. You know, he’s a local fixture on the news, and I think he’s a face that most people, once they’ve seen him, know him, and just was a great guy in the community. So we could all pause for a moment for him. And then, on a more personal note, Stephen and I lost his pop-up this past week. He passed away yesterday. He was an Air Force veteran, a long-term fireman, and a long-term resident of Southern York County where Stephen is from. So unfortunately, as we head into the Thanksgiving holiday, we will be headed to funeral services for him. So if we could just keep both men, both great men, one probably more well-known, one known mostly to us, and your thoughts and prayers if we can pause for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allott. Moving on to pledge allegiance, Mr. Mattson.
Pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Moving on, communications. Tonight, we have presentation of the proposed 2020 budget by Mayor Eric Papathous. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. We have a lot of exciting and positive news tonight, and I’m honored to be able to present a balanced 2020 budget to you all this evening. The agenda we’re going to follow is the same agenda that we’ve used in past years. We’ll talk about balancing the budget. We will go over some revenue and expenditure highlights. We’ll talk about how we’re maintaining critical capacity here at the city, some debt management initiatives that we have, update on capital improvement projects, and we’ll end with next steps and the future plan budget hearings. So the first slide, as in past years, takes a moment to really absorb. What we’ve done here is we have compared three things: the 2019 budget, operating in capital, and the 2020 budget that we’re proposing, operating in capital. We’ve also included a comparison to the five-year plan that we put together earlier this year. The first thing that you’ll notice is that if you compare the revenue line for the 2019 budget to the 2020 budget for the five-year plan, it’s a differential of about $1 million. And when we put that together, that was in part because, and you’ll see this in detail in a minute, we were expecting about a $1 million drop-off in parking revenues as a part of how the parking deal was structured. That was to be expected. It was front-loaded in the sense that we received higher payments in the first five years of the parking transaction and then lower payments. But I’m pleased to say that we are projecting for the 2020 budget, underoperating, a budget of $64,959,105 in revenue, which is larger than even the 2019 budget and incorporating the $1 million loss from parking. And we are significantly, we’re about $1 million in increased revenue since we put together the five-year plan back in the spring. And I will go into some detail about why that is, but the news is very promising for the city. We will also talk in some detail about a proposed additional payment to AMBAK, our bond insurer, of $5 million, which we are proposing for this year, and the term sheet for which is on your agenda tonight. And we’ll talk about some, if you recall, when we did the capital plan back at the beginning of the year, we had about $3,145,000 in certain projects that we budgeted. And then we had a list of priority projects that we would have liked to fund, but we wanted to make sure that we could fund responsibly. And we’ve got about another $1 million worth of projects that we think we’re in a position where we should fund them for the good of the city, and we’ll talk about those as we move along. So this is the seventh consecutive year that we’ve had no tax increases and a balanced budget, and we are absolutely showing a trend of moderate, yet steady, economic growth across all sectors. Before we switch to the next slide, though, I did want to note one thing in case it stands out to you. For the five-year plan, on the expenditure side, you’ll note that we had originally budgeted $62 million. That is because the $2 million payment to AMBAK, which we’ll discuss in a minute, was optional at the time we put the plan together. We are proposing making it not optional and adjusting the agreement we have with AMBAK. And in addition to making the $2 million draw year not optional, we’re suggesting paying an additional $5 million. Okay. So let’s drill down on the revenue highlights. And for the revenue highlights, there are many. The first thing you’ll note, if you go to the bottom, is that that’s where the priority parking decrease is there. It was not unexpected. As I say, it’s about $1.2 million, and that will continue moving forward at the rate that we’re seeing for 2020 and beyond, but not at the elevated rate that we had up until 2019. But aside from the parking payment, every other item is up. It’s up both in terms of what we had in the 2019 budget, and some of them are up, in fact, in terms of what we had for the 2020 budget when we put it together. So notably, earned income tax is increasing at a fairly stable clip. It was up over projections earlier in the year, and we’ve revised that even upwards beyond what we had in the five-year plan. And we’re seeing strong growth in the mercantile business tax sector, where we’ve got an estimated about $500,000 more in revenue than we budgeted for earlier in the year. That, plus stronger realty transfer taxes, basically means there are more people working in the city, they’re earning more money, businesses are doing more commerce, and more people are buying and selling property. And really, uniformly, all of that is very good news. We’re seeing, going to see an increase in pilots for next year. I’ll get to that in a minute. You’ll note that in the LST alone, you’re looking at several thousand new jobs created since the budget in 2019, since we were here about a year ago. And I’ll also just mention that pension aid continues to increase, which is a good sign, and that’s something which comes from the Commonwealth. So we’re showing budgeted revenues across the category steadily higher year over year, and it is a very positive revenue outlook. On the expenditure side, you will note that if you start with personnel, the budget for personnel is about $1 million more than what we budgeted in 2019. And that’s largely because we are proposing giving the police a $1 million increase in their personnel budget. And that’s part of the new collective bargaining contract that they voted affirmatively for, that we’ll talk about as we move forward, that’s going to help us with wages and retention and recruitment issues. But that really explains the increase, and it explains the increase based on the five-year plan, which did not calculate a new contract at that time. We’re showing some stabilization in terms of pension expenses and healthcare, and we are also budgeting a lot more in debt payment, that additional $5 million, which we’ll go into some detail on. Going to AMBAK accounts for the extra $5 million in debt service. All right. Let’s take a moment and unpack this chart and talk a little bit about the new police contract. Now, council’s going to have an opportunity to talk to the lawyers involved and really drill down into all the aspects of the police contract. But from the public standpoint, I wanted to make some highlights. And the main thing we’re doing is we’re doing a, pretty much, a complete makeover of how police officers are paid, and we are embedding a sense of longevity into a contract, which originally had a bifurcated system, in which, if you’d been here for a long time, you got longevity, which basically meant there was an added bonus for how long you were here, and if you were hired post-receivership, you didn’t have that. So there wasn’t as much of an opportunity or reward for being here longer. So if you look at the column on the left, this is for patrol officers. After you get through the training phase and the probationary phase, under the old contract, you would get up to about $64,500, and that would be it. You were done. It didn’t matter how long you were here for. If you were a patrol officer under the old contract, you would cap out at that number. We’ve changed that, and we’ve changed it considerably, and at great cost to the city, by basically getting the patrol officer salary up to $70,000 after five years of completed service to the city. So five years from your hire date, you’re up to $70,000. And then, if you’ve been here for 20 or even 30 years in some cases, you can make upwards of almost as much as $80,000. So there is a sense of progression the longer you’re here, but there’s also this bump, this fairly large bump, right at the beginning, which we believe will help us both recruit new officers and retain them as they’re here. As I say, this salary scale is similar. It works for all ranks, not just patrol, but the majority of our officers are in patrol, so I showed you that one there, but it’s also elevated for all ranks. On the, there are a couple other highlights, not on the slide, but things that I want to mention. There were some older officers under the old contract that were eligible to retire with an added benefit that would have expired when that contract expired. We extended that benefit. It was a pension bump benefit, which basically does not put any pressure on them to retire due to the contract. They can retire when they wish, and that should also help us not see some of the older officers retiring and depleting our ranks. It should be noted that this is a six-year contact proposal, which is long, because it’s not only a five-year new contract, but it also is replacing the contract that would have been in existence for 2020. That contract, had we done nothing, would have only provided a 1% raise and no bonus and not really changed the dynamic at all. And given that we haven’t been able to get up to a critical capacity in police, we felt we wanted to open that contract a whole year early and hopefully bring our numbers up. In addition to that pension bump, some other highlights for the contract. We will be adding additional supervisors. We’re going to be adding some capacity in upper ranks, which means there’ll be more opportunity for upward mobility. We’re also going to civilianize some positions. I will show you that on the next slide. And we’re going to offer increased pay for specialty units. So right now, if you’re a specialty unit, let’s say you’re an FTO or a member of the traffic safety unit or some specialty unit, you don’t see any additional compensation for that, and we’re going to work that into the contract. And we’re also going to return Martin Luther King Day as a holiday for police. That was something that was removed under receivership that we wanted to bring back. So in a nutshell, that’s what the contract is doing, and we will go into greater discussion about it, but it does account for, in year one, $1 million more in personnel costs for police. The next slide talks about some of the new positions for police, and I am excited to say tonight that the school district is very interested in reviving the school resource officer program that once existed in the school district. It’s something that we’ve been interested in reviving in the past, but now they want to do it. They are offering to split the cost of school resource officers 50/50 with the city, so for everyone we hire, they’ll pay for one as well. And we are proposing, starting with two officers next year, and then building the program as we’re able to build capacity over time. We also want to take two positions that are currently, and this was negotiated as a part of the contract, two positions that are currently done by uniformed officers and civilianize them, basically make them management positions so that we can return those officers, basically, to patrol and other tasks. So those two that were identified are, there’s a court liaison, and there’s an accreditation officer, and both of those can safely be civilianized without, and actually allow us to have more officers doing other things. We’re going to add a captain, so that’s an organizational change. There’s some lieutenants and others that are collectively bargaining. The captain is management, is part of the command staff, and that’s going to allow us to have two captains, one now for CID and one for uniform patrol, whereas historically we’ve just had one captain, and the last several captains have been out of CID, and this should help from both a management standpoint and also an upward mobility standpoint for the department. Our total complement is increasing. We have the ability to budget for 153 uniformed officers. We haven’t been able to get out of the high 130, so we are well below that number, but we are hopeful with the new salaries and the longer-term stability, the stability of a longer-term contract, and some of these other changes, that we’re going to finally be able to build those numbers back, and that I’ll be talking to you in future years about increasing that number beyond 153. But that’s not all. It’s not just exciting news for police, it is also exciting news for fire, and we’re very pleased with the management of fire. And we are proposing adding four new firefighters for the 2020 budget, and we believe that we can pay for those. In fact, we’ll exceed the cost of those firefighters in year one through a reduction in the fire overtime budget, which is even a further reduction over where it was. If you remember years ago, when we first started here, the fire overtime budget was through the roof. We’ve slowly built back the ranks, but we can lower it even more, and that will give us greater capacity as well, and it will serve the citizens well. So we have a means of paying for it, and we are proposing four new additional firefighters. That will bring up the bargaining unit complement from 82 to 86, plus their command staff. Other than those changes in police and fire, there are very few personnel changes in the budget. There’s not a lot. It’s not like last year, where we were proposing a whole series of new positions. We’re proposing a couple, and I’ll start at the top here. We, if you recall, last year, we created our first project manager position. We put that person in traffic and engineering, and that person has worked out incredibly well for the city. We’ll talk about one of the projects that he managed extremely well in a minute, but it has resulted in a savings and in a greater quality of completion of some of the things for traffic safety. We’d like to do another project manager in the budget for next year, specifically with regard to our parks. And this is somebody who will be able to oversee implementation of the Reservoir Park Master Plan in all of its phases, work with the Civil War Museum, which is continuing to fundraise to try and purchase the artifacts and establish a fund that will help fund the Reservoir Park Master Plan. And I’m pleased to say that we just received, just within the last couple days, a $250,000 grant from DCNR towards the Chutes and Ladders Playground. That was something we were hoping for and even expecting, and that application had come before council, but it is official now, which doesn’t mean that we have raised all that we need for the playground, but does mean that it is one step further towards its actual implementation, and that’s something that will fall under this project manager. Also, we think a project manager could help work with the many volunteers in the community, coordinating their efforts for cleanups and whatnot, as well as assist our current grants director with finding additional opportunities for funding. Other than that, the other positions are pretty self-explanatory. For our events, we are proposing having a part-time special events coordinator that would report to the special events director and would basically be available only for our events. We’ve added Arts Fest, as you know, this past year. We think, logistically, it would be helpful to have one more person available. This is a relatively small amount of money in a small position, but it’s an important one, because it would give greater capacity. By having a special events logistics coordinator, you’d also cut down a bit on some of the overtime, which is now required of our other managers of the city, and allow the events to, you know, basically run themselves. And so that’s in the budget. There’s one change to the public works. We are taking currently an administrative assistant in public works and moving that person to management, creating what is essentially a special assistant position to the director in public works. That is essentially the task which that person is performing, but now it’ll be formalized, and it matches what we have. We have a special assistant assisting the police commissioner, a special assistant assisting the mayor, that sort of thing, that sort of role. And then, this is not a second position, but the old position that she was in would simply be reclassified as a customer service rep. So the union would not lose the position, but the management would gain a special assistant. And then, finally, we’re proposing one more solid waste enforcement coordinator, which means basically somebody to work with our current coordinator in citing and going to court and implementing our new enforcement program for sanitation. I can report tonight that Howard Drayton, who’s been our officer and has started issuing citations since April of this year, has already issued 65 citations for up to $22,000 in fines. He’s got 30 more pending, and he’s got a lot of ideas and energies for how we can expand the program. And we’d like to have a second person in it so that we can do even more. So those are the only changes from a non-public safety side of things. I cited a few other highlights of the maintaining critical capacity when we went over the pilots. I am pleased to announce tonight as well that we have negotiated with UPMC Pinnacle to increase their annual pilot contribution to the city by $150,000. When I took office, they upped it at the time from what it was and agreed to a five-year pilot agreement extension. That has now expired, and they’re willing to up it again by another $150,000 moving forward. That’s a sign that their business is doing well. They’re the largest private employer in the city, and we are pleased to have that additional revenue coming in. We’ve also had our, we had a grant agreement with the Visors Bureau that was proceeds from the hotel tax that was used to fund our special events director and another position here at the city, and that had been for, I believe, three years. That has expired, and they’ve decided to renew that, as well as to increase the amount of support that goes directly to the city. They also provide additional support on the marketing side, but this is the direct appropriation that goes to the city to help underwrite salaries, and as those salaries have increased, they are also willing to increase their grant. And then, finally, just again on the Harrisburg School District. Basically, we can’t tell you the exact amount until we choose the actual officers who will become the school resource officers, but assuming that they are approximately five- or six-year veterans of the department, then they would be making each about $70,000 a year, so half of that cost would be $70,000 coming to the city to help pay for the SROs. Onto debt a little bit. Basically, as in past years, the city is anticipating paying off the full AMBAK liability and not taking advantage of what was a provision that we could borrow up to $2 million a year against it if the city’s finances required it. This is something that, as you know, we’ve done every year for the past several years, but the key this year is that we’re planning to, we’re planning to make that payment, or that, not have that draw be anything other than basically required in the agreement, so that it will no longer be available to us to take moving forward if we agree to the term sheet that’s proposed with AMBAK. So let’s talk about that for a minute, because this is big deal, a very big deal for the city, and is something that has taken a whole year-plus to negotiate. We have a proposal, it’s also on the agenda, for a term sheet with AMBAK, our debt insurer, to basically significantly pay down some of the debt. The easiest way to think about this from the public standpoint is, this is the debt that the city didn’t pay under receivership, when it basically didn’t have enough money to pay its general obligation bonds. AMBAK, the insurer, stepped in and paid that debt, and then, in receivership, it was negotiated that when the rest of the general obligation debt is paid off, the city would have to pay that back with interest for a 10-year period after 2022. That’s what this money is. By prepaying it now, we’re going to achieve a fairly significant benefit. AMBAK is interested in getting that debt off its books, and as a result, it has offered the city a multiplier. It’s a multiplier of 1.38 against payments up to $8 million, which are made towards the debt. We’re budgeting $5 million to start, and that multiplier effect on $5 million means that basically they’re saying, you give us five and we’ll credit you for $6.9 million. That’s a great benefit and a positive thing. They’re also willing to, if we agree to those terms and we prepay the five, they’re willing to reduce the interest rate for the next three years, which 2020, 2021, and 2022 are the last three years of the regular general obligation debt before we would start paying on this debt. So moving forward, they would reduce that interest rate down from 6.75% to 5%. Now, that payment, plus the multiplier, plus the interest rate savings, all means that that overall liability, which we then have to start paying on after 2022, that is reduced by almost $9 million, and it goes from something around $28 million down to $19 million just by doing that alone. And that is, those are the terms of an agreement which are before you, and again, it makes that draw no longer possible. But the even bigger news is that I think the city is planning to test the waters of entering the financial markets, in that we want to issue an RFP for an underwriter, and we will do this, to see if we can actually then, on top of that, refinance the rest of the liability, take advantage of the additional multiplier effect, and remove AMBAK from the picture altogether. Finding a banking partner that’s willing to do this for the city would be a big step in restoring creditworthiness and is something that our financial advisor, who is Marathon Capital Advisors, thinks is actually doable, given where we are as a city and the progress that we’ve made. So the deal is good even without a refinance. The deal is even better with a refinance, and that could result in millions of dollars more in savings just by, say, refinancing that interest rate to a new term, down to 4.5%, as opposed to the 6.75% would be a big savings. So more on that, and I know council’s going to have lots of questions on the police contract and the AMBAK settlement term sheet, but this is just a brief bullet points for the public’s benefit as well tonight. Finally, on debt management, last year, I think we had a very good agreement and an excellent policy that we are proposing we continue moving forward, which is that we had transferred, basically, the money that was allotted for positions that ended up not being filled on a regular basis from the general fund to the debt service fund to use for debt. We’re proposing going ahead and doing that again for next year. Just as a point of interest, over the course of 2019, the city did fill 44 positions, so a lot of those positions that were open have been filled. And outside of police and fire, which are always in flux, there are currently, just so everyone knows, there are currently 19 positions open at the city. Seven are management, 12 are ask-me. Most of those are in various stages of interview process, and so some of them are likely to be filled soon. So I would say that whatever savings we would anticipate next year would be less than the savings we saw this year, but nonetheless, putting that aside for future debt service funding makes sense to us and can be part of our collective debt management initiatives. So now we’re going to turn to capital for a little bit, and I know the font size on these graphs is a little small, but you have seen pretty much most of this before. The ones with the asterisks are the ones that are in the approved sort of five-year capital plan. That includes the D-CIT and D-REV system replacement upgrades, which are very important to Treasury, by the way, and I’m sure you’ll hear their advocacy for that moving forward, the Office 365 and the planned GISA. A couple things on the list which are carrying over from previous years, like the Fourth and Dauphin Playground, which is not quite finished, but is in the final stages, and the voiceover IP phone system replacement, that is not finished, and that was coming from a gaming grant fund, but we have discussed that before, and there’s been a lot of conversation about it. Other than that, the only stages, and the voiceover IP phone system replacement. That that is not finished, and that was coming from a gaming grant fund, but we have discussed that before, and there's been a lot of conversation about it. Other than that, the only real new proposals from a capital standpoint here have to do with security cameras, printers, and access controls. And so I would, aside from the printers, which are just it's necessary now to do a printer fleet replacement for the city, the access controls and the cameras are about public safety and improving public safety, especially at city facilities like the Martin Luther King Building. And to break up the monotony of some of these slides, we've got some pretty exciting designs I want to share with you all tonight and the public, which has to do, again, with safety improvements and improved accessibility for the Martin Luther King Building. But and this would be financed by city CDBG funds. We've talked about that, upgrading just the first floor of the building to improve access and accessibility to the bathrooms and the common space and public safety. But here are some renderings that are hot off the press from our architect about what the entryway to the first floor of City Hall could look like. And and we, as I say, we have the CDBG funds available to do this, and we could move forward with this in the new year. So that the first slide was the entryway. This is the second slide. If you go back one, Bruce, the first slide shows you where the 3-on-1 operators would be positioned, and you're basically looking at it from the front doors. The second slide would be through that space onto the main floor, and what you're seeing there is a glass wall into council chambers. And quite excitingly, council chambers, which could be equipped with a sort of new orientation and new lighting and basically a new upgrade, would basically, I think, allow for increased public interaction and public participation in the legislative process. And those are some upgrades we we would like to see. Then, switching from those illustrations back to the capital budget. If you look at public safety and the VMC, again, not very many changes. The ones in asterisks is the patrol vehicles for the police and the lease purchase for the fire. Those were in the five-year capital plan. There are a few things in there which are contingent on grant funding, but we've got them there. We'd like to get a new van for vice surveillance, a new van for patrol command, but and we have ideas on where we can find funding for those, but that would be subject to the receipt of those grants. And then there's the vehicle leasing program that we entered into a few years ago, which basically has the fleet changing over on at regular intervals. I wanted to segue from that into something which is pretty exciting, which is since we are doing leasing of our vehicles, on a yearly basis, we can start bringing into the city fleet itself some electric vehicles. And what you see there is a picture of the new angled parking on Third Street across from the State Museum that's just gone in. And then on the next slide, there is a picture of the what the electric vehicle chargers are going to look like, where there's four dual-part port charging stations for eight of those spaces. And that is what we are proposing putting in also on City Island. And we have a grant proposal, and we're proposing using a little bit of money from the host fee to fund the implementation of those charging stations in the garage over at City Island. And then, once that is in place, we can begin switching over some of our fleet to electric. And this would be things like cars for codes inspectors or for some some in building and housing that are doing outreach in the community, cars that don't need to travel outside of the city and are doing lots of sort of regular local transportation, and then can be charged overnight at at these stations. So let's let's continue. Moving on to the Capital Projects Fund for Neighborhood Services, this is also not that different than what you've seen. In fact, there's we we've done such a good job of purchasing equipment for city services over the past few years that a lot of what you're seeing here is just the continuing lease payments of things that we've already purchased, the refuse trucks, the dump trucks, the front-end loaders, all those things. Those payments continue on for a number of years. Tells you how many on the graph, and we're getting there. But in terms of new equipment, there's there's not a whole lot planned. There's there's the there's some grant-funded potential for for bulk collection trucks. And there's also there's some grant money for the recycling program. There is the proposal of a for a new small packer, and this is something which which currently could be used in Steelton, and we can talk more about that at some point. You also have a new agreement with Steelton to consider moving forward. It has the outsourced demolition money that we have proposed and done in past years as well. No change there. And then parks maintenance, however, that's where we've added some things from the priority one list that we that we didn't have when we did the original capital plan. There is some equipment there for parks maintenance that really needs to be replaced, a dump truck, a flatbed, and we also need to get the mowers into a sort of regular cycle. And part of this is being is now able to be identified through through the new focus and the new increase in the in the Parks Maintenance Division here at the city. As in past years, we have always reported to you, and we're going to do again, what the city public works staff has done in terms of paving, right before we get to some of the larger transportation projects in the city. We have, last year, we gave you a list of alleys and locations where the city was planning to pave. Well, this is what they did manage to accomplish over the course of the year. It talks about when they did it, what the costs were, and those are just the basic costs for doing it, everything from blocks on Logan Streets and 16th Street and Fifth Street, you name it. And then, if you flip to the next, you'll see the internal paving priorities. Now, these are, again, these are the things that the city's own forces will be doing to complement some of these larger paving and capital projects that you're seeing. That 15th Street project, by the way, is an exciting, affordable housing project that's going to be coming your way soon, and and is going to be really transformative for that neighborhood in Allison Hill. And it requires us to do a little paving to be able to get our trash tucks into this newly designed neighborhood. But that's just a list of those priorities for you all to look at and mull over. And also in past years, we've done a sort of demolition status report where we've talked about what was demolished over the past year and what the priorities are for the next year. Works had a goal of 20. They they actually completed 18, as well as, I think, there were some garages and other things that the demo crew did. Those are the addresses. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see that, of course, the need, though, is vast. And the priority lists are the ones that are identified currently as the most important priorities for 2020. And we may not be able to get to all of them, but we're going to focus on getting to as many of them as we can, and they are in in order of priority that could change depending on circumstances, but is the priority list as of today. Okay, let's talk about some of the exciting, large capital projects for the city. Before we get into the ones that are proposed for 2020, last year at this time, we talked about four projects. We talked about the South Harrisburg paving project, we talked about the Riverwalk project, we talked about the Hur Street Accessibility Route Project and the McClay Street Project, and you funded all those in the capital plan. And so I thought we'd just share some pictures of the completion of those projects. The first one shows the area of the South Harrisburg paving project. I mentioned that this project was overseen by a project manager, Ambrose Buck, who has done really wonderful work for the city. The project came in on time, under budget. Basically, we had to we had to add a few a few additional things, but was extremely, extremely well managed. 112 new ADA ramps, making the whole corridor much more accessible, a lot of paving, many new inlets and tree removal. And those are some pictures. I hope everybody's had a chance to sort of see the impact of that. It goes stretches really all the way from South Harrisburg to Cameron Street up into Allison Hill, and it's been a lot of a lot of time and energy over the past year. We also successfully completed the Riverwalk project, which is approximately two miles of new concreted walkway, lots of tons of concrete, a lot of work, and that project, I think, has really enhanced people's ability to enjoy the riverfront and our park. The Hur Street Accessibility Project was something we talked a lot about. We did complete that over the past year. We've got, again, more ADA ramps, new bus stops, new sidewalk. There's a picture, and it is it has been a very positive improvement. And then there's McClay Street, 46 ADA ramps already completed. There's one intersection left. That is the intersection of Fourth and McClay. That will be done in the spring, but everything else is done. That has eight ramps in addition at Fourth and McClay, and that had to do with the repositioning of the signal there. That was always planned to be a sort of separate project that was a little more complicated. But the rest of McClay Street is done. So a lot of positive developments based on last year's capital plan. Then, if we look at this year's capital plan, you will you will see some projects that we're going to talk about in a minute, including the East-West Connector, which is a interesting project which is going to affect Chestnut and Walnut Street. You see some projects that you've seen before, such as Vision Zero, all of which were in the five-year capital plan. And you see some projects you saw last year which are carrying over again to this year, including the Seventh Street construction. That was delayed in part as we worked through things with the federal courthouse and with FIA. And I'm pleased to report that FIA has stepped up and is prepared to spend over $200,000 to help close the gap on that project, and they're very excited about seeing that completed. They're also donating land around the roundabout, which is good for the city, and I'll show you a picture in a minute, but that's a that's a positive thing. We'll talk about the East-West Connector. We'll talk about Mulder Square, and we'll update Vision Zero. So let's let's go to the next slide. These are basically the five main projects which are going on for for next year. The North Seventh Street project is the thing which you should see beginning first. That will begin in May of 2020. Again, that just required that final sign-off from FIA, and I've got a slide to remind you about that project in a minute. Mulder Square should commence over the summer. That also is a carryover that had to be worked out with the Redevelopment Authority and some RCAP funds and other other aspects of the Mulder Square project, but that will take place. And I'm very pleased to say that we at last have had some very positive movement and discussion with PennDOT about State Street. You may recall that when we were discussing Kittleson back a few weeks ago, talked about how PennDOT had originally said, no, we can't do any safety improvements to State Street. It's a state road. They were concerned about the impact on commuter traffic. We've pushed back hard. We've utilized Maverick, and we've seen movement there, and they're now making suggestions, and we are working on designs, and I'll show you a possible design here in a minute. Then there's the East-West Connection, which we just received a $500,000 grant for. That is a multimodal grant, and I'll show you some slides there for the downtown. And then there is the North Second Street Two Way, which has had a lot of conversation. That project is a multi-year project that won't be completed until 2021, but we anticipate being able to send the project out to bid in April and starting to see some construction on that project in 2020. So in 2020, you should see all five of those projects commence and some of them complete. So let's go back to North Seventh Street just for a minute. This image was here last year, but it is really happening now. The they're in the final stages of design, and then it will go out to bid. Again, it has improved crosswalks, and those crosswalks that you see going across are now basically being paid for by FIA, which is their contribution, but it's going to be an important pedestrian upgrade for everyone. There is a two-way cycle track which runs along the FIA side, which is a positive thing, and obviously, the traffic circle itself will have a calming effect. This may not complete next year because we're going to try and time the final completions with the courthouse, but it will get underway next year, and some of those changes will be made, including the removal of all that parking, which is in the middle, the middle of the street. Mulder Square was, you know, has has come an awful long way in the past year. The the new buildings from the Housing Authority are bustling and full of activity. The neighborhood is, I think, ready now for the infrastructure changes, the new traffic circle, the new configuration to tie to the YWCA and and the other traffic calming measures. So that is scheduled for the summer of next year and will be a major positive addition. And now the State Street Rapid Response. Now, this is only a suggestion, but at least it is it is something which has come from PennDOT themselves, which is really positive. Again, we wanted to we wanted to improve safety on State Street. We wanted to connect State Street to the Capitol area, Green Bell, and we wanted to basically give the road a road diet. We had talked about potentially having a a parking protected bike lanes on both sides. PennDOT wasn't wild about that idea. But what they have agreed to is the concept of returning something of a boulevard to the street, which would allow us to basically have a bike path, walking path, green space, trees down the center of State Street, basically shortening the crossing distances and allowing for a safety refuge for pedestrians and bikelists down the middle of the street. We are going to need to do some more public outreach on this and refine and develop these ideas, but the good news is that we went from, no, you can't do anything, to we will work with you to try and get you to do something. And I think PennDOT has recognized the importance of this priority project for the city. The East-West Connector is basically Walnut and Chestnut Street improvements downtown. I will draw your attention to, as the press release for the grant, which just came out. But if you look at below that, at the intersection there, if you look at Second and Walnut, you'll see the Second and Walnut is is going to be major improvements there at a corner that we all know and appreciate, bumpouts, new crosswalks, pedestrian connections. There's also replacement of sidewalk, the whole thing, making it easier and more accessible for pedestrians. And then there's Chestnut Street, which you've already begun to see the bumpouts on Chestnut Street, but you haven't you haven't seen the reconfiguration of Chestnut Street. And one of the nice aspects of Chestnut Street is that it's got bike lanes going from Riverfront Park, connecting on both sides of the street up to the train station and back, and then also connecting to the small bike lane that runs against traffic there on Third Street. So that is the East-West Connector, and that is going to dramatically transform the downtown into a safer, more walkable area, and that's also going to be coordinated. Chestnut Street will be coordinated with the Harrisburg University Project, so that also may not be completed in in its entirety next year, but you will see the the line painting, the bike lanes, and the bumpouts. And then, finally, Second Street Two Way. As you know, we've had we've had really good public input on that, lots of lots of excellent commentary, a lot of people very excited. We did adopt a model and a plan for that that does not include a dedicated bike lane, but rather has a series of other measures, median strip like you see in the top image there, pedestrian refuge, and a series of many roundabouts at various intersections. So that is that is a little preview of what is to come there. Okay, so we also wanted to talk just generally about the capital plan, and this is something that we have worked out with the new ICA members. And as part of the agreement, which is is currently being worked out and will be to council soon, with with the Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, we're looking to produce the capital plan each year with a revised five-year plan for an early deadline of basically April 30th. That's going to sort of accelerate next year's budget schedule so that we're doing capital and long-term planning in the beginning of the year, and then we're doing the rest of the budget later in the year. That will go to council and the ICA in April and could be theoretically adopted over the summer. And that will be something that we'll have to do every year as we move forward under the new agreement, revising our figures and numbers and our capital plan in accordance with our needs and abilities to pay. And then also under next steps, you've got some in the audience who are here tonight. We recently supported the application of a group that's been working for a new African-American monument in Harrisburg with the Gulfen County Gaming Commission. I think it was important for us to say that we're going to have skin in the game, too, if we're going to ask the county to also step up and help fund this monument, and also for us to let let other foundations and organizations and community know that we think this is a worthy project. We think it is a really a terrific project, a much overdue project for the city, but something that is worthy of funding. So we're we're proposing in this budget a challenge grant, which is we'll put up $25,000, but we also we also have a fair bit that we have to raise from all the various community stakeholders, not not just the county and the foundations, but the the general public as well. We're going to help draw increased attention to this project as we move forward in the year. It would be a remarkable monument and a source of great pride, I think, for Harrisburg and its residents. That's it, except moving forward, the public should know that currently, we have planned two. two budget hearings. One is coming up on December 10th, the other on December 12th, and that we're currently anticipating a budget vote on December 14th. I think council will also potentially have hearings and executive sessions. Sorry, did I say that wrong, December 17th? Sorry about that. Council may also have other sessions on other aspects of this, this very busy and filled with important things agenda, but from a budgetary standpoint, if people want to drill down on our departments and hear their reports, they should come back on the 10th and the 12th. Thank you very much, Madam President and Members of City Council.
Thank you, Mayor Reed. Of course, you know, we have a lot of questions. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to courtesy of the floor. I'll start to my left. Anyone who would like to come to the mic, please do so now. In the middle.
Richard Soto, 1339 South Eighteenth Street. I have an issue. The boss back there, Mr., what's your name? That's him, man? Ah, the boss back there. I had an issue a couple of weeks ago now, about four weeks now. Truck driver from State Street down there knocked down my wire. From my internet went out, my drain went out, my shingles went up. I filed the claim and everything. The lady, I did the claim, they sent it to the, whatever, insurance, they insurance company. She's trying to get me to send her a decoration form to show I got insurance. I do got home insurance, but what she trying to do, trying to get over. Pay the deductible and say we settle with, and then my insurance take care of everything else, pay for the damage and everything else and the labor and all that. That's not happening. Now, I was arguing with her on the phone because she was, she was being disrespectful. I was explaining to her now, if you could put it in writing that you're not going to do that, you're going to take care of the damage and the, and the labor and everything, then we go from there. She was saying, you don't have no witness and this, this and that. Well, we did the claim and everything. I seen the truck knock it down. He kept on going. He should have stopped and see who, why he knocked down, because they start looking up when they was leaving. The other thing, I don't know why they was parked by the swimming pool. There was no trees to knock down over there. You know, I could show you a couple of workers in the city that I took pictures of that go to sleep in the lot. Yeah, taxpayer, I'm paying for that. I could show you about eight of them sleeping. Police officers too. I think you don't want to give them no money. Trust me, I got it right here. I could show you anytime you want. Madam President, I could show you. I don't have no problem.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Soto. You've been corresponding with someone from the city of Harrisburg.
Yeah, I was calling somebody.
So did you alert Mr. Johnson as to one of our trucks hitting your, knocking down your wire?
Yes, yes. The supervisor, big guy named Dave, came up there with that driver. He took the pictures and everything. He took pictures and the, the whole nine and did the form and everything. I got the email here. I was trying to call the man, the brother, I think that, I don't know if that's him or him. I, I don't know what his name is. His office in here, but he's a supervisor over there. I've been calling him. I got his name down on the thing on my, at my house on the paper. Been calling him, been hiding now, I came down, was hiding now, wasn't trying to respond. I called him, I called him, I called him. It's, it's been for weeks. Only thing I say, things happen. Only thing I ask, fix it. And I don't want nobody from the city to fix it because I just put a brand-new roof in, and I lose my warranty if another company mess with my roof. It gotta be the same company that put my roof on.
Okay, Mr. Soto, if you have a few minutes after the session tonight.
I gots to go now, but I just wanted to say that.
Can you leave your information with Mr. Petrowski, please? And we'll get back with you.
Okay.
Because we need to have an opportunity to talk, Mr. Majors needs to have an opportunity to talk to Mr. Johnson and any other city employee.
Ah, the lady's name is Diana, Diana Frizz, whatever. That's the lady, he said. And she, only reason she called me back today because I, I got on the phone with the supervisor. I started complaining, and then all of a sudden, 10 minutes, she started calling me. That's when she started arguing with me, talking about, oh, you don't got no witness and this, this and that and that, you don't got a li. I said, they bring the guy to the house that drove the truck that did it. I mean, come on, only thing I want you to do, fix my thing, that's it. Don't try to get over on me.
Okay, we'll look into it. Leave your information with Mr. Petrowski, Mr. Soto.
Yeah, ah, thank you.
And we'll follow up with you, please.
Yep. With him?
Yes, my city clerk.
I think I talked to him on the phone right about you.
You remember?
Yeah, I know how to get in contact.
Okay, Mr. Majors will, we'll get back with you.
I'll be in contact.
And if you want to see the pictures of the, of city employees, the cops and the, the dog catcher and all of that, and some of the work that I showed you, you got about eight of them sleeping in the car.
Thank you, Mr. Soto. Moving on, anyone else in the middle, please? Anyone to my right?
Lenwood Sloan, 200 North Third Street, 8th floor. First of all, I'd like to thank the council, the mayor's office, and the city for their support of the Commonwealth Monument Project in 2019 and their encouragement as we move to realization of the monument at Fourth and Walnut Street. Challenge is the right word, Mr. Mayor. The entire project has been a challenge for us. We rise to challenge on this project. We have been daunted, but we have overcome. I am with Jeb Stewart, who is Secretary of the Project and also the DGS Department of General Services liaison, who will coordinate the installation in the next six months. We had an exciting year. We're coming to the end of our 12th monthly session of free public events at Gammet and the Public Library. We've done an installation of 12 sites of the Commonwealth with views of what the old Eighth Ward looked like. We've had a consistent exhibition in Amtrak with hundreds of thousands of people. We've done a temporary exhibition on the site and pop-up events. We've done a pretty exciting round trip to the studio where we've unveiled the four bronze, the model for the four bronze statues. And we are encouraged by the city and the council, especially its citizens, as the four historic figures come to life off the pages of the design and into clay and onto the bronzing, and they will arrive on June 15th of 2020 on the corner of Fourth and Walnut Street. June 15th is the dedication day. It begins the week-long activities of the governor's first statewide commemoration of Juneteenth. We'll be in Harrisburg on June 15th, and delegations from Harrisburg will go to four corners of the state for June 19th parades. So we are encouraged by you. We also need your support, and especially the support in finding the names of the hundred, the descendants of the names of the 100 people that are on the monument. We've asked the mayor to designate June of 2020 homecoming month, and we've encouraged the mayor and his staff in Park and Rec to work with us to find descendants of the 100 families who used to live in the old Eighth Ward and invite them to come home to Harrisburg in June of 2020, to have their family reunions and the picnics and their block parties in the streets, and to stand with us on that site where their descendants once lived to dedicate the monument. So we reach out through the mayor and through Channel 20 to ask the citizens of Harrisburg to help us identify those 100 families and their descendants, which are stretched across the entire Mid-Atlantic region. And I thank you for your support, and I hope that you help us in what was sometime called a Sisyphus Project, but we just think it's about climbing another mountain. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan, and congratulations to you. And I look forward to being in, at the celebration on June 19th or June 15th. And any assistance that I can provide for you, please contact me. Anyone else to my right?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jean Greco, the 301 Chestnut Street, apartment 1210. And I work downtown, and I live downtown. I attend ICA meetings as well as city council meetings when I get a chance. I'm impressed with your budget that you submitted, Mayor, and my, my overall issue is, what is the bottom line, and how is ICA actually helping you come up with the solution in the long term? I have been at ICA meetings, and at least I don't get to sit in on their meetings because they have closed meetings, but when they allowed the public to stay. But I don't know what they've accomplished or what has been accomplished, and if you can give me an update, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Anyone else to my right, please?
Aaron Johnson, 15th West, South 13th Street, near Two Manners. I got a public transportation, a cat bus, and we got a situation out there at South Harrisburg in Hall Manor. First of all, the city council, that situation's taken care of, what Rich Soto was talking about, the necessary paperwork already been filed, so you know how rich get, he gets crazy. But anyway, that's taken care of.
Thank you.
But it's not my department, anyway, but I do know that it's been taken care of. So, insurance policy, you know, that takes a while. You just don't, you know, some people think when something hap, we, we damage something, they get their money the next day. You know, it don't work like that. Necessary stuff been filed. But a situation that I want to bring to your attention is Row 46, 47, 48, right there where the community checkup center is at in Hall Manor, okay? What's happening is you got not just cat bus, but you know, cat buses are pretty large. You got our city vehicles coming through. Right now, you got people parking on both sides. When you come up Hanover, when you come from 13th Street or you come off of Cameron, come up Hanover, when you get up there in that area I just named, the rows, 46, 47, 48, you got cars parked on both sides. So like when the number 13 bus comes up there, you have people right there where they park at, they working on cars. So then you got all this traffic backed up. So the oncoming traffic is coming from, like coming from the pool coming around, they can't get around because you got, like I said, you got cars parked on both sides. The cat bus now, they can't get people to work because they can't get around. So I'm just, want to bring this to attention because it's a problem. We got inclement weather coming, it's going to even get worse. I just think that needs to be brought to Housing Authority's attention that they're going to have to tow these cars, because giving them a ticket don't solve the problem because cat bus can't get by. And then you know, they got the red cups out there, know what's in the red cups, and ain't just Soto all the time. So when they get into their little situation, they get irate and everything, and you got all these people wanting to fight, you got the bus, you got people on the bus, they trying to get to work, they talking crazy to the bus driver. It's just not a situation that you don't want to explode. It's going to happen, but it didn't happen yet, and we glad, that's why we bring it to your attention, because it's, it's a problem. It's a major problem. If you ever come up there in the morning, you'll see they parked on both sides, you can't even get down the street. You want to say something?
I'll certainly reach out to Mr. Mans.
Okay.
Yes, Lionel Randolph, 1833 Berry Hill Street. Yes, when you, it's actually, there's times that it's a single file out there, and one time actually was two buses facing each other, nowhere to go. Then there's a trash truck that come through and have to, it's in between, it was either between 8:00 and 10:00 o'clock, the trash trucks there. That whole lane says no parking on the one side, then you had the cars that's parked correct, but then there's cars parked alongside them halfway parked in, and it turns it into a single file out there. It causes all kinds, it's a safety concern. Right, thanks.
Thank you, and I certainly will address that to Mr. Mans tomorrow when I talk to him.
Greeting council, I'm here to support CAT and also Mr. Johnson on the same situation, and to add to about food school. When we are going, in the morning as buses are coming there, Aaron and I did a little view this morning. We got people that double parking, but they're also triple parking. There is gridlock, and we're near a major highway. He asked me to come because, you know, I'm going to pre-talk to you about the environmental issues that's there. When all that is just sitting and idling, we got young children that's going into the schools. People can get sick immediately smelling the fumes from the buses, the cars, et cetera. No traffic is moving when school time and when people are getting out of school. And, and as we went through there today, we did see some of the activity, you know, school was over, but you still see some of the residuals of the activity, and all we want to do is bring awareness, we want to prevent anything from happening in that area. I also want to mention a little bit as well, I was sharing with him, well, Sixth Street is the same way. Again, preventing, people are triple parking on Sixth Street. When the children are coming out of school, it becomes now one lane. So there is some solutions, we can submit some solutions to you if that will be helpful, but we just want to bring the awareness to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right, please? Okay, thank you. Moving on with the agenda. Approve of minutes, approve of the legislative session minutes of November the 12th, 2019. Council members, are any omissions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, minutes are standing to approve. Moving on to reports of committees, we have none. Moving on to ordinance for first, for first reading. Mr. Petrowski, please read Bill 13, 2019, into record.
Bill 13 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Major, seconded by Mr. Allen. It's a ordinance enacting an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the city of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, and the borough of Stillton, Pennsylvania, to allow the city of Harrisburg to provide municipal solid waste and recycling collection and disposal services to the residents of the borough of Stillton, and to establish the terms of such services.
We will place that in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Bill 14.
Bill 14 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's an ordinance establishing the budget for the municipal government of the city of Harrisburg for the year 2020.
We will place that in Budget and Finance. Moving on to Bill 15.
Bill 15 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg, Title Five, Licensing and Taxation, Part Five, Real Estate Taxes, Chapter Five, Dash 501, Property Tax by Establishment for the Year 2020, a tax levy on land and improvements in providing for the distribution of taxes, taxes levied and assessed and providing for a tax rebate for the difference between the tax due and attributable to the year 2020, tax levy over the tax due and attributable to the year 2006, tax levy for qualifying senior citizens.
That also will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on for ordinance for amendment, we have none this evening. Ordinance for final passage, we have none. Moving on to resolutions, before I begin the resolutions, I'll turn it over to my Public Safety Chair, Ms. Green.
Thank you, President Williams. I'd like to start by bringing Resolution 79 from the floor. Mr. Petrowski, could you read it into the record, please?
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to bring Resolution 79 from the floor.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Resolution 79 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Green, seconded by Mr. Allen. It's a resolution approving the 2020 Municipal Domestic Animal Protective Services Agreement with the Humane Society of Harrisburg Area to provide services to the city of Harrisburg's animal quitter program.
Thank you. Do I have to open up for discussion?
Right now, that's what I'm saying. I'm going to, but I need to ask you that. Do I need to make sure that, after I do the, the voting on the motion to?
So you do not need to have a discussion?
Okay.
You have a discussion?
Right. Okay. All right, members, we're voting on Resolution 79 to bring it up the floor.
Calling the vote. Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Bowers.
Yes.
Ms. Daniels.
Yes.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Madsen.
Yes.
Mr. Majors.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, council members, is, is there a need for discussion? Okay.
Just a, just a brief description of what the resolution does.
Okay, well then, I'll open it up, I mean, then we'll suspend the ruse if you're going to open up for discussion. Have a motion to suspend the ruse, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Now we'll open up for discussion.
This is a, an agreement with the Humane Society. It's something that we do every year. The current agreement expires December 31st, 2019, and this one would be for the next calendar year.
Then is there any costs associated with the agreement?
There's a one-time payment of $26,557.17. It's a deposit, but this is an evergreen based on the numbers that are taken, so if they draw that down, they send over an invoice to the police to refund it.
Okay, yeah, no, I just wanted it on the record because whenever there's a cost associated
know, animals that need to be taken to the Humane Society.
Okay, any other discussion, council members? Hearing none. Motion to go back into session?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. We're gonna vote on that when we get to it. Okay, moving on to Resolution 86, 2019.
We're gonna vote on 79 tonight?
Well, yes, but I, oh, I thought it was, you know what, I was moving on to resolution. Okay. Please read, I mean, take the vote for Resolution 79, please.
Calling a vote for Resolution 79, Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 79 passes.
Thank you. I was trying to do everything under, up until 80, Resolution 85. Okay, moving on to resolutions. Resolution 86, 2019, Mr. Petrowski, please read that into record.
Resolution 86 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Major, seconded by Mr. Allitt. It's a resolution authorizing the city to negotiate and enter into a supplement to a professional service contract, I mean, services agreement with Dawood Engineering Inc. for the purpose of providing additional engineering services for Mulder Square Transportation Enhancements.
That will be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution 87, 2019.
Resolution 87 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Major, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Kittleson and Associates Inc. for, to perform a traffic and community impact analysis on the proposed I-83 Capital Beltway Pendot Project.
May I have a motion to suspend the ruse, please?
So moved.
Have a second?
Thank you.
Resolution 87 is, is up for discussion. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Council President, members of City Council. This is a request for a supplement to increase the not-to-exceed budget by $7,000, which is less, right around 10% of the current contractual value. The reason for the budget request is we analyzed, under, there was two phases to the Kittleson study, the I-83 study. Uh, the first phase was the, um, was the modeling efforts on the, on the corridor to, to look to minimize the footprint. That study is complete. We looked at six different scenarios as opposed to what was anticipated in the budget, which was four. And then, so the money we spent on that analysis doesn't go into the second phase, which was looking at the cross connections over I-83. So we have over or under I-83. So there's five, uh, major corridors in the city that go either under or over Interstate I-83, Cameron Street, Paxton Street, 13th Street, 17th Street, 19th Street. When we reached, when we looked at that scope, Cameron will be widened and there's probably not a lot of other amenities, other than sidewalks, that will be provided. Paxton Street is actually gonna be realigned, so we'll have a lot of input on, on that realignment. 13th Street, 17th Street, and 19th Street are very critical corridors to the city. All, 13th Street will be narrowed, like a road diet. Uh, 17th and 19th will be widened. So we felt it was important to, um, provide Pendot with information, and they actually suggested that we provide information to them of what we would like the cross sections to look like, how wide sidewalks could be, bike amenities, how would they tie in with other bike amenities in the neighborhood, such as the green belt on, you know, where 19th Street. So we're, the Phase Two scope is now looking like multimodal amenities dictated to Pendot on those three, um, cross corridors. And, uh, our new analysis of the time commitment to complete that is a seven, is a 10% increase in the contract value.
So how long would that take to do that analysis?
Will be done by the end of the year. The, the existing conditions, study has been completed and drafted, um, so they're looking at the, uh, cross sections that Pendot has in their plans, which are not really public right now. They're, they're working closely with Pendot designers as they develop the designs, um, looking at some of the other things that we're doing in the city to be consistent with, you know, citywide. But, uh, end of year. The study for I-83 freeway analysis is completed and delivered, it was delivered to the city on Friday. So I'll make, I have a copy here, but I'll make sure I get a clerk, Kirk, a copy tomorrow.
Do you know what the, how many business and how many homes will be affected by this analysis?
Unfortunately, I, I don't have that information. Pendot, um, keeps that pretty tight to the vest until, until they're ready to, um, speak with the property owners about, you know, the acquisition.
Okay, now will they have, available for them, uh, legal representation, or will the community residents have to obtain their, retain their own attorneys?
So the, so the way it works is, um, when you do eminent domain, and Neil will probably kick me in about five minutes here, but, or, um, in seconds, the, um, property owners, if they disagree with the assessment, um, they are, they do recover some attorney's fees from the process, but there is a process laid out, um, where they'll, you know, they're, it's designed to make property owners whole.
From my understanding, sometime in eminent domain, they will provide legal services for those individuals whose homes they want to acquire. So that is my question, is they're going to?
There's a statutory limit that's relatively low.
Right.
I think it's up to $4,000 for assistance, which really you're not gonna do $4,000 to solve a title problem, an acquisition problem, um, you know, with Pendot. It's just that's not gonna be realistic, so. Uh, but they do have the right now. They could always challenge it further and, and drag it out, which is really the homeowner's leverage. And they have six years after the acquisition to challenge the price, uh, whether the estimated just compensation was appropriate for what they got. So it does sort of hang out there for a long time.
One of my concerns is that a lot of our community residents won't understand what eminent domain is and what is gonna be in details as far as time to acquire their property. So will you have someone there, or will they have someone to give them that information to?
No.
Make sure that they?
I mean, I don't expect that they will. Um, I mean, this is part of being a private property owner, the situation. Um, there was a meeting that Pendot held on the other portion of this, right? Up through, I believe, there were many property owners who attended.
Yeah, I, I'm aware of that.
And I don't know if they've, they've talked about collectively petitioning something, I don't really know what, to, to, to get some modifications. I don't know if they have any leverage or not. Um, the comments on that, I believe, were due December 16th or so.
I think it's the 17th.
17th, if, for, for objecting to that portion, which isn't our portion, but the reality is both those portions are right against each other and both, if one gets built one way, it pretty much influences how the other's built. Um, but I really don't know where Pendot is. I think it depends who you speak to in the state.
Maybe you can ask that question of them, Wayne, when you meet with them again. And also, who will be the retainer of the funds for the acquisition of properties?
The court, there would be, the courthouse would, the monies would be paid.
They would go through them? Okay.
Yeah, they make a deposit for each, each property with the court if they do not work through a, uh, agreement or stipulation.
Sometimes there's attorneys, the Commonwealth will retain attorneys to distribute the money to the property owners, so that's why I just want to make sure.
There'll be attorneys, it's just they won't be the owner's attorneys, there'll be the Commonwealth's attorneys, so.
Okay. I mean, we actually, we, the city obviously has an interest in seeing property owners and residents retain, you know, ma- maintain city addresses if possible. And we did work on the single project, we have a little bit of experience in that, in trying to help those property owners. So if the state allows us and the, or I should say, if the property owners or residents or businesses allow us, um, we would certainly like to be at the table to, um, help them relocate within the city.
As long as we're not providing them legal advice.
Pardon me?
As long as we're not providing legal advice.
Oh, yeah, right, that's understandable. That's why I asked, is there gonna be an attorney who would be there to provide them services? And I think the Commonwealth should have someone there to make sure that they understand what is, you know, what the process is and what's happening.
But our office could make a couple inquiries if there's a pro bono counsel out there for this group, you know, through the bar association.
You just don't go in and just tell them I'm gonna, you know, this is what I'm gonna do in this area, and then I'm gonna, you know, do eminent domain. And most of you people don't know, the residents don't know what eminent domain is, so.
So just a point of information, I know Widener, for example, offers free legal services. So maybe it's reaching out to someone like them and just?
Yeah, I think they're probably, it's probably over the heads of a law student by quite a, quite a bit.
Oh, sure.
And, uh, but there are a series of large firms that often will have a, um, signature pro bono project for a year or two. And so this may be something for one of the larger firms at Harrisburg to take on, property owners to assist them. Um, I can't say that will happen, but we can certainly make the inquiries.
Well, that's why I asked Wayne, because he may, you know, he can sit at the table with them and just make sure that he understands that, you know, we're looking out for the residents here in the City of Harrisburg. Any other questions, council members?
Uh, just to clarify, what we're looking at is just the, the analysis and the study that we've taken on because Pendot was looking to do the I-83 expansion through the City Harrisburg. We wanted to make, we had some concerns with the size and the scope of the project. This resolution is simply to help us perform the additional work on the traffic and community impact, so, um, just wanna make sure that, that's, that's clear, so just additional $7,000. Work that's already started, and we just need to finish the completion of.
Correct.
Yeah, I think the residents, you know, probably even half of them who live in that,
that corridor is not aware of what's going on. So if this, this is an update, fine, you know, they can look at Channel 20 and see or hear what's going on. And know that in the future, at some point, the Department of Transportation will be contacting them.
Very unfortunate that, um, I think that's one of the problems with the Pendot project is, I'm, I only recall one public, public meeting, and it was not in the City of Harrisburg. Um, it was at the Harrisburg Mall. And, um, so we can certainly have our own public outreach with respect to this Phase Two of the Kittleson project, because these are city roads, uh, as part of the project, well, 13th Streets, 17th Streets are city roads, 19th Street's actually a state route, but we can certainly, um, have a public meeting on that point and, um, maybe answer questions that come up.
Yeah, and I'd be willing to work with you to get that set up.
And I agree. Yeah. Certainly I would be upset if I was, you know, resident and living in that corridor and they're coming and telling me they're gonna, "Eminent domain, take my home." Well, you're gonna have to justify why you're gonna take my home. So I think it's important that we try to make sure that our residents be educated about what's going on. Just don't come for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania just because they're the state and they feel they have the right of way to just, you know, come and acquire your property. No.
Agreed.
Any other questions, council members? If not, yeah, oh, I'm sorry. I am so sorry.
So, I've been traveling a lot lately. Weren't we supposed to have a report from them, uh, like a weekend or so ago?
Yeah, we, the report was delivered on Friday.
Okay.
Um, the last day of the promised date. Um, I, I have it, I have a copy here, but I'll email Kirk.
Please do, please do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, council members?
Madam President, there is a point of clarification here, which, my apologies, my office printed off the original resolution that didn't have the additional $7,000. It's the right contract, it's the wrong resolution. So we've provided the clerk with the substitute resolution there.
Okay.
Um, which simply adds the $7,000 overcharge on it, so.
And, yeah, budget, I mean, that, well, I shouldn't, $7,000 would be the budget cap, it would be the new cap. Doesn't mean, doesn't mean we'll spend all $7,000.
That would increase the project from 72.5 to 79.
You have more copies? Neil?
What's that?
We need additional copies. Is this okay? You want to share?
I hate that I never get to come back and tell you all the money we save on projects like the Riverwalk and things, but I'll only ask you for more when they run over.
So then we need to sign the, this copy, the amended copy.
Sure, and since you're in, since you're in a, uh?
I need to do an amendment then, because you, you don't have that in there, you had seven.
Well, it's a corrected one, so, but since we're, since the rules are suspended, you could do it now, could just correct it. It's a corrected one, so.
All right, so we'll correct it. Okay. Any other additional questions, council members? Hearing none. Have a vote to go back into session?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We're back in session, Resolution 87, with the corrected amount of $7,000. More questions or comments? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 87 passes.
Thank you. Mr. Petrowski, make sure Mr. Major signs the corrected resolution, moving it. Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 88.
Resolution 88 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allitt. It's a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into a professional services contract with Maverick Strategies for strategic guidance and intelligence gathering for lobbying-related services.
That will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 89.
Resolution 89 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Bowers, seconded by Mr. Madsen. It's a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate, enter into a professional services contract with Steve Zimmerman to provide access and service to the city's historical mainframe, programming, operations, and related services in the Bureau of Information Technology.
That will be placed in Building and Housing. Moving on to Resolution 90. Chair Green, do you want to suspend the ruse, or do you want to just vote on the Resolution 90?
I'd like to suspend the ruse, please.
Okay, will you make a motion to suspend the ruse?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the ruse, please.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Uh, Resolution 90 is a resolution, uh, to dispose or donate of certain personal property owned by the City of Harrisburg. It's police radios, um, I see six police radios with estimated value of $200 per radio that will be disposed of, four going to hack and two going to Homeland Security. Any questions or additions?
Any questions, comments, council members?
A motion to go back in the session.
Wait a minute, what's the value? What, what's the value? Do you?
Each value is $200 per radio.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Any other questions, council members? Okay, have a motion to go back in the session?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Resolution 90, please call the vote.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 90 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 91.
Resolution 91 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Green, seconded by Mr. Madsen. It's a resolution authorizing and approving the submission of an application to the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board to exempt a specific area of the City of Harrisburg from the PLCB's regulations regarding amplified music being heard off the licensed premises in favor of enforcing the city's adopted noise ordinance.
That would be placed in Public Safety Committee. Moving on to Resolution 92.
Resolution 92 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by Ms. Green. It's a resolution authorizing the city to negotiate, enter into a professional service agreement with First Capital Engineering, Inc., for the purpose of providing land surveying services in Reservoir Park.
That would be placed in Parks and Recreation Committee. Moving on to Resolution 93.
Resolution 93 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Majors, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Harrisburg School District to provide salt to the school district at a price of $90 per ton during the 2019-2020 winter season.
And that would be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution 94.
Resolution 94 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Allitt, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into an agreement with the Harrisburg School District for the collection of the business privilege and mercantile tax and the amusement tax for the 2020 tax year.
And that would be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Resolution 95.
Resolution 95 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Green, seconded by Mr. Madsen. It's a resolution of the Council of the City of Harrisburg ratifying the 2020-2025 collective bargaining agreement between the City of Harrisburg and the Fraternal Order of Police Capital City Lodge, Number 12.
And that would be placed in Public Safety Committee. Moving on to Resolution 96.
Resolution 96 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Allitt, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Harrisburg approving the provisions of a term sheet to modify and amend the second amended and restated settlement agreement between the City of Harrisburg and Ambac Assurance Corporation.
And that would be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to old business, council members, any old business? Moving on to new business, council members, any new business? Mr. Allitt?
Just want to reiterate the process for the budget for this year. As mentioned, the hearings will be on December 10th and December 12th, which is a Tuesday and Thursday. However, for my colleagues, please review the budget and get any questions you have on the budget in advance of the budget hearings to Kirk by noon on Thursday, December 5th. Just also, as a point of clarification, if each committee chair would pay particular attention to their budget area as they think of questions, that would be helpful. Just make sure this process runs smoothly, so we can move in our best efforts to pass the budget on December 17th.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Allitt, any other one else, new business?
This, I don't know if it will be new business or old business, but this past week, myself and some of my colleagues were able to travel to San Antonio to attend the National League of Cities Conference, so I just want to say thank you to the taxpayers for affording us that opportunity. I hope that the, the things that we learned, we can bring back and really bring some changes to the city, just to make us better, some best practices that we've learned from other people, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Mr. Majors?
Well, first, I just want to thank everybody again for all your thoughts and prayers. I missed the last couple of council meetings, because my wife and I had our first child, our son Wyatt, we were watching the last city council meeting, so, making sure he's engaged in politics from, from the beginning, so, again, I just want to thank everybody in the city Harrisburg, you know, from the mayor's office, the administration, all down to my fellow colleagues on council, for all your thoughts and prayers. Additionally, you know, as we're entering into the holiday season, I just want to make sure that we think about all of those that may be a little bit less fortunate than ourselves, so if you're able to spend some time volunteering at any one of our number of, either homeless